It's nice to see a packed house with friendly, smiling faces tonight. Welcome everyone, this is our Board of Ed Business Meeting. And our student representatives have joined us just in time, so if Isabel and RJ, if you're ready, we'd be happy to get a report from you.
Okay.
If not, I could buy you more time.
Hello everyone and Happy New Year, we're excited for the rest of the year. This Saturday, Ling Crew is a freshman orientation group, and we basically help freshmen with orientation and then midterms and other things, so we're almost like a peer system to help them. And we have Coco and Cram this Saturday, and that's a study session from 10 to 12, and that's just to ease their nerves and help them get through the midterm process. And the Cheshire Education Foundation on Saturday, February 29th will be holding their annual trivia night, so we'll inform you guys about that next meeting. And the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, that's a new club that is being started at Cheshire High School, and that's, we're gonna fundraise money for blood cancers and of course leukemia. And athletics updates, the winter sports programs are well underway, league championships will begin mid-February. The winter captains recently attended a league captain seminar, and they were able to meet with other school league captains on this leadership program. And sports teams are recognizing officials during a contest as part of the Officials' Appreciation Month. It's an effort to thank officials for all they do for high school sports.
Okay, also, the quarter two edition of The Rampage is being released next week, which is on the Cheshire High School website. National Honor Society is holding a annual, their annual holiday bear collecting jackets, hats, gloves, scarves, and more for those who are in need across Connecticut, so it's basically a school-wide drive that the Honor Society is holding. There's also Winter Wishes being hosted by the Honor Society, which is basically you buy a candygram for a dollar or so, and you write a kind, positive message on it, and then you send it to whoever you want, just for like holidays here. Peer Health and Student Leadership, the student, there's a student leadership training seminar hosted by the Cheshire High School Student Leadership Advisory Council in February. Also, the annual Excellence in Leadership Conference is in the process of being organized, and that will be held in April, inviting Cheshire High School students and other high school students from the Central CT area to attend.
Best Buddies on February 8th, they will hold their snowball dance party at the Parks and Rec Center. And on February 15th, there will be Senior Night for CHS basketball players and Unified Senior Players, and all will be recognized. And on February 29th, there will be Best Buddies Night at the Varsity Hockey Game at Wesleyan University. And March is gonna be Best Buddies Month, and that's spreading the word to end the words, we're gonna have activities to reinforce that. And the Friendship Ball is also in April, and it's gonna be the roaring twenties, so that's gonna be fun. And Curriculum and Activities Students Night is January 30th, 2019, a class of 20, 24, wow, will be prospectively touring and exploring CHS for the night to meet staff and see what the student life is like, activities, and clubs, and sports. And Course Selection will also begin on Tuesday, February 2nd, and teachers will help advise students and recommend students on choosing classes for future years at CHS and for their interests in careers. And lastly, the Blood Drive Club, in partnership with the American Red Cross, will be having its next blood drive meeting and blood drive on February 5th from 7:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and all proceeds will go to the American Red Cross Foundation. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you Isabel and RJ. Does the Board, or anyone have any questions?
I have a quick question. RJ, I think it was you.
Yes.
Thank you. RJ, I think you mentioned the Cheshire Education Foundation Trivia Night.
Yes.
Did you give us the date for that?
Yes, February 29th at 7:00 p.m. I have flyers if you want me to pass them out.
That'd be great, I'm sure that Jeff will let us know, because I needed to, I needed to bring up that the Board of Ed team came in second place last year on the trivia night.
Oh yeah.
So, we were only beat by a ringer team.
Yes.
And congratulations to that ringer team. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Anne, are there any questions from the Board? Isabel, RJ, thank you so much for your time tonight, always appreciate your updates, so hopefully we can cut you loose early and get back to homework.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we have two presentations, we'll start with the School Partnership Award for Darcy School and Doolittle School.
You wanna start with Darcy?
Sure. You want me to read it, this is new. I don't have my glasses. Anybody who have their glasses?
This is new. It is with gratitude and appreciation that Darcy School nominates Brenda Robley and her therapy dog Nilla as the recipients of the 2019-20 Darcy School Partnership Award. Brenda and Nilla became important members of our community last year when they began visiting Darcy School. Nilla's visits helped our students and our staff to relax, gain confidence in their learning abilities, and share their thoughts and ideas. Nilla was eager to greet everyone, was nonjudgmental, and she was a great listener. Often, Nilla could be found in the library surrounded by children who were eager to share their books with her, or lying in the hallway with a young child whispering a story into her ear. Her presence alone fostered a feeling of joy, kindness, and acceptance amongst our students. A heartfelt thank you to Brenda and Nilla for their commitment, their patience, their kindness to our children. We all benefited enormously from your visits. The Cheshire Board of Ed thanks Mrs. Robley and her dog, Nilla, for going above and beyond for the children of Cheshire Public Schools. Come on up.
Thank you. Thank you, I never expected this.
That's a tough act to follow, but from Doolittle School, I'd like to invite up Principal Amy O'Brien.
Good evening, everyone.
Anne stole the, Anne, you have that paper? You got it? Okay, good. It's going to the dogs.
Nope, I think I have it, we're good. Okay, tonight, for the first Doolittle School Partnership Award, we are going to be recognizing Peter Staley and Rich Miller, if they can come on up. Mr. Staley is a Doolittle parent, and Assistant Cub Master of Cub Scout Pack 198. Mr. Miller is a Doolittle parent and volunteer with Cub Scout Pack 198. Doolittle School has been proud to nominate both Mr. Staley and Mr. Miller for their service to Doolittle School. As the new principal at Doolittle School, they welcomed me right away, and as soon as I came into the building, they asked if there's anything they could do for us at Doolittle. I had just had a PTA meeting where they talked about getting equipment for a new Gaga Pit. Right away, these two gentlemen said that they'd be happy to help build it for us, and they did that, they came up on a rainy weekend, and two of them by themselves built this Gaga Pit. Our students were very, very happy to get it on Monday, and it's been a great addition to our playground ever since. So, thank you gentlemen for your time and for your service. You're welcome.
Thank you. I got two of those over there, so.
I'm still talking to each other after doing that.
I said in my budget presentation in this room last week that, you know, we've had such incredible success as a school system, you know, academically, our achievement has been actually at record-high performance levels for identified students for special education supports as well as general education. We rank top five in Connecticut in terms of our overall achievement, top 500 districts in America for our, for niche.com for the first time this year. And the reason that we are so successful is not just because of obviously our students who are really tremendous and come to school ready to learn, our Board of Education who does a tremendous job in supporting them, of course, our teachers, administrators, and everybody who works in our school system, but our parents and volunteers like this who make Cheshire Public Schools such a great place to go to school. We really thank you for the effort that you put in to make just special additions to our schools, it's very meaningful, so thank you again so much for that. Moving on, you know, I, one of the things I miss most about being a high school principal is watching our student athletes compete, 'cause my schedule now, we're just talking about meetings every night, but the, being part of that is so incredible. And tonight, we have the honor of being able to recognize one of our athletic teams that found the pinnacle of success, and so with that acknowledgement, I'd like to invite to the podium our Athletic Director, Mr. Steve Trafon.
Thank you, Mr. Solan. Chairman Perigene, members of the Board, I have the honor tonight to present our 2019 high school girls swim and dive team, and they are coached by Head Coach Dave Marazuski. Dave, it's his second year with us, and so in two years running, he's won two state championships, so he's doing a pretty good job. So, just let me fill you in on the accolades that our 2019 team did. The team went undefeated in regular season swim and dive, then they moved on to the league championship, the Southern Connecticut Conference Championship, and they won that title. And in the 26 years that the league has been in existence, Cheshire lost that title only once, so, and that was not this year. So, they continued with the, with the tradition of winning our, the state, excuse me, winning the league championship. After that, we moved on to the state championship, and this year, the team moved up to the Class Double L section, which is the largest class in the state, and it's usually occupied by Greenwich High School. And they have, they're perennial powerhouses in the Double L. Cheshire Rams came and they beat Greenwich High School to take the Double L championship this year. The team wasn't done at that point, they moved on to the State Open. State Open is where all of the classes come together to decide who is the best team in the state, and Cheshire High School won, naming us the number-one team in the state of Connecticut. Probably just as important as what they do in the pool is what they've done in the classroom. So, 26 out of 29 of our varsity athletes on the girls swim and dive team were named to the All Academic SCC Team, which means that they have carried a 3.66 or better grade point average, so that's another recognition that we're proud of. So, at this time, it's my honor to present members of the, of the team and their coaches. What I'd like to do is if they can come up and be recognized by our Board of Education members, thank you.
Congratulations. Great job, guys, congratulations, so much to be proud of. Congratulations, congratulations. Congratulations, great job, guys, congratulations. Awesome, you did a good job, congratulations. Congratulations, exciting start. Yeah, congratulations.
I'll fall right over. I have to. Okay, I gotta go back. Scooch and Neil. You're down, down up front. Just try to get the board members behind you. Okay, we need, keep going down. Keep going down, we gotta see the board members in between. Can we get the board members to the side, you think, so that we can see them all? Yeah, can, can we get the board members, board members? Board members, can we catch you in the picture too? Keep going down. Let's get board members down here too. All right, come on, board members. Did you get, you, you got them all right? Okay, we gotta get everybody here. Are you going up? I'm going up. All right, I'll spot you. Okay, don't let me fall. I don't wanna be in your way. I don't wanna be in your way. Okay, go ahead. I'm not going up. Can you scooch in a little?
No, we're good, you got the board, you got, you got the important people.
And you're not in, either are you. We need you in on the sides, a little bit more. There we go, all beautiful. One, two, three, and one more for me. One more? Okay. One more? Very nice. Thank you so much. Thank you. Here. What's going on here?
RJ, I don't understand, genuinely, like I'm speaking to you. It's such a fool. Bye, thank you.
And now the room is empty. Was it something we, was it something we said?
Did I hear from the Superintendent's Report?
All right. Well, things, something got quiet.
Did they take Carrie Tim out with them, or?
We're going to.
Don't shut the lights off.
Andrew, I think you had a question earlier for one of the presentations.
It was about what they built at Doolittle.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I didn't say.
What is it?
Sounds like a good board event.
A Gaga Pit.
Yeah, super popular.
I always wondered what that was.
Yeah, Gaga Pit is a small octagon, basically, that kids play a modified game of some, like dodgeball in, kind of. It's not really dodgeball, you have to hit somebody in the legs with the, by tapping the ball off their leg, and kids jump out of the way, and it is wildly popular with the elementary school set, so I'm sure it was much appreciated what they did.
Thank you Superintendent Solan for that clarification. We're gonna move on to item number three on our agenda, which is Approval of Minutes. We're gonna bundle these together in one motion. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a motion that the Cheshire Board of Education approved the minutes of the December 5th, 2019 organizational meeting, December 5th, 2019 business meeting, and the January 9th, 2020 presentation of Budget Board of Education Meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Grippel, is there a second?
Second.
Andrew Martelli, seconds. Are there any additions or corrections to the meeting minutes? Yes, Anne?
I have one easy correction and one proposed addition. So, for the Board of Education Business Meeting on December 5th, on page three, I'm listed as liaison to Chapman School. My name is A-N-N-E. It's a little thing, but it's important to me and to Anne of Green Gables. On the Board of Education Budget Presentation Meeting, on page six, when we're talking about the student Megan Coyle from the girls hockey team, I think it should be included that she presented us with materials also, if, if others agree. I don't think it needs to be a motion, it's just, just an addition. Thank you.
Any other changes or corrections from the Board? Seeing as there's, is none, the motion is that the Cheshire Board of Education approved the minutes of December 5th, 2019 organizational, December 5th, 2019 business, and January 9th, 2020 presentation of Budget Board of Education Meetings. All those, all those in favor? It is unanimous, motion passes, thank you. Up next is my favorite part of the meeting agenda, Ms. Helen, is there any correspondence?
There is no correspondence, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Helen. Up next, on Section 5, we have a Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I wanna reiterate how impressed I was with the way our girls' ice hockey players brought their concerns before the Board of Education last Thursday. Ms. Solano, just to update everybody, Ms. Solano and Ms. Hussey met with the girls' players on Friday morning, the next day, to make sure that they had all of the relevant information, and have since worked to review our participation data and Title IX guidance through the Office of Civil Rights. As we've completed that process or in the stage of wrapping up, I, I think it's really most appropriate to first start by meeting with our students and hockey parents before we announce anything publicly. We haven't done that, but we're in the process of trying to schedule for the next couple of days, if, if we can make the schedules work out, and at that point, I think it'd be appropriate to review all relevant information and, and talk about any potential financial considerations at one of our next upcoming budget meetings as soon as we can do that. So, I wanted to just give people an update on, on that process. I'd also like to congratulate our CHS student artists, Nina Chang, Lorenzo Pepe, and Sarah Chen, and Haley Schmidt for their, their artwork having been accepted into the Connecticut Regional Scholastic Art Awards exhibit. It's a juried show with thousands, literally 3,000-plus entries from all over Connecticut, and less than 600 works are accepted into the show. Our students were awarded with a gold key, four silver keys, and an honorable mention for their work, and the show is being held at the Hartford Art School in Twob Hall through January 30th, if you have the chance to check it out, so congratulations to those students. Saturday, this Saturday, the Cheshire Suddington YMCA is holding its annual Polar Plunge at Camp Sloper. The leaping will commence at 1:00, and it's led by our Cheshire High School football team, and their coach, Don Drust, our Darcy Principal in attendance tonight, and Donary, Dodd Principal, Mike Woods, and our Chapman, Chapman teacher, Garrett Regali. Of course, you know, last year, I was able to do the Polar Plunge when it was like seven degrees for the month of January, and this year, I have a conflict when it's 70 degrees and I can't do it. So, you know, such is life, I guess, but thank you to all of our teachers who are participating in dress down, their money benefits students in our community, and it's, it's very much appreciated, their contributions. Our staff is incredibly philanthropic. Last week's Early Release Day was valuable and it allowed our staff to cover a number of topics, most notably, teachers explored things like Eureka Math, math fluency, next-generation science standards, and technology. Those days are incredibly valuable for our professional growth, so we really appreciate that being built into the calendar. I know that a little bit later on, we're gonna talk about the School Modernization Committee, but I wanna just take a moment to thank Dodd Principal, Mike Woods, and Assistant Principal, John Parisino, for leading the committee last night on a tour of their school. I know everyone found it very informative, and the modernization plan is currently our top priority after ensuring that we maintain our outstanding student educational and extracurricular programming. I've spoken to Mr. Perigene and others from the community, like Ms. Harrigan and others, who've expressed interest in examining school start times. That is definitely worthwhile conversation, but given the upheaval that may be necessary in terms of scheduling to ultimately update our buildings, both Mr. Perigene and I think it's important that we focus on modernization at the moment and look to start times once the proverbial and hopefully literal dust has settled with school building process. I just wanna take a moment to give a quick shout-out to our K-8 Curriculum Coordinator, Kevin Hanlon, and our elementary school reading and math specialists on the launch of our new Math Strategy Family Resource Page, which is available on our website. They are, it's also complemented with videos, which can be accessed through our brand-new district YouTube channel, so that has, now brings us up to Instagram, YouTube, Twitter, Facebook, and I wanna thank Kelly Lenz, as I, I always try and do, our school community coordinator, for all of her work on that, amen, 'cause she's become a social media dynamo through the course of the year, and I'm sure that like all the pictures you've seen tonight, if you've checked us out on Instagram or Facebook, or whatever your preferred social media access point is, you'll, you'll see some of the stuff from tonight. And ultimately, you'll see stuff on our new website, so I just this week received mockups of, you know, what that new site would look like, and I, I brought some images for the Board to check out, and you'll see on the first page, I also have a few for throngs in the audience. So, on the front page of this document, you'll see the image with students at the very top. That is what you would see when you actually log on to our website, and as you scroll on the website, you, you would see information like you see below. Now, you'll see that a lot of this is in, you know, nonsensical, like Latin language, with all due respect to our Latin teachers. with all due respect to our Latin teachers. I did take Latin in high school. I can tell you this isn't Latin. But it's just there to kind of show a filler. So this is just, like I said, is a very rough, early mock-up of what our revised website would look like. The picture at the bottom, those are actually our Cheshire football players, and some of the school pictures are legitimately ours. But this is kind of what it would look like when you log on. The headers at the top, those are going to be a little bit different. We worked on that this week. And if you flip to the second page, when you log on to the website mobile, from a mobile phone, this is what it would look like for the log-on. So you'd see our contact information as well as, you know, kind of a rough overview. And if you scroll, you'd see the same sort of stuff that you see on the regular homepage if you were accessing it via a desktop. So we're still working hard on that, and hopefully, you know, sometime later this spring, you'll see an updated and spanking new website. So that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Superintendent Solon. Any questions from the members of the board? Obviously, quiet tonight. I... first of all, Kelly, thank you for all the work you're doing with our presence on the world wide web. I've been doing my best to share the CPS Facebook page out to other forums, get people, you know, get more likes, more traffic, and encourage more members to do the same. I... oh, sorry. Oh, you had an ACES update.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
My bad. There was one more item under...
That's my fault, actually. And I'm glad that Ms. Solano, like she often does, cued me to, hey, buddy. The other item that we did... that I did have to update you on, and again, I am sorry for interrupting you, Mr. Perigini, but every year at this time, we engage in a review of our open seats across the elementary schools, really, to determine what, you know, might we be able to offer for the Open Choice Program through New Haven, where we have the opportunity to provide seats for students in New Haven. If they choose, they can enter a lottery to attend one of our schools. And we open up seats in early elementary grades with the hopes that those students will retain and matriculate through our school system. Usually, you know, some do. It can be very challenging to get up that early in the morning as you get into the higher grades, and... but we love it when our students can stick with us and make it an incredible experience for us. And so next year, what we're looking at is in the kindergarten grades to add an additional seven seats, and in first grade to add an additional five seats. Currently, you know, we have 20 students in grades K through six, and we do receive a stipend of $3,000 per student to offset costs. But again, you know, the value we get is way more than the $3,000 a student, so we do try and add more seats whenever we can. I don't know if there are questions on that topic.
So is the enrollment trend increasing?
Not necessarily. I would consider it more stable. You know, last year, we opened 16 spots. This year, we've opened 12. The 16 we opened last year, unfortunately, not all were taken. So I think that it's not reflective, I don't think, of the desire to want to attend the Cheshire Public Schools. I think unfortunately, that we're the geographically farthest school system away from New Haven in this catchment area, so it's a tough bus ride in the morning.
Tim, you have a question?
Yeah, you just mentioned first grade and K. I'm just curious, and New Haven is typically where the kids come from. Do they all go to Norton? I mean, geographically, it's not... okay, it's...
No. We look at...
Just because it's the closest.
Sure, where we have seats available. The length of the drive isn't really so much within Cheshire. It's getting out of New Haven and making stops along the way to get here. So that's the bigger challenge. But no, we spread out seats across the district. We do try and provide multiple seats in each school that we offer a seat. We wouldn't just have one student from New Haven in one school. It's just not good for them, we don't think socially. So we try and put multiple students into the schools, but it's a variety of elementary schools in the district.
Faith?
Just actually, two questions. One, transportation. And then, secondly, what are the considerations that go into opening new seats?
Well, the considerations that go into opening new seats are, we look at the enrollment and the grade level within a school, and we are able to indicate, you know, to be determined now. And then in the spring, when we have a better sense of where we have available seats, then we kind of parcel them out to identify this... these are the specific schools in the specific classrooms where we can add additional students. In terms of transportation, I think, is it New Haven or ACES that coordinates that trans... ACES coordinates that transportation. So they provide the transportation from the students to our schools.
So we... there's no pressure on us to be adding seats from Hartford or from...
The greatest pressure that we have to add seats comes from within. Our administrators appreciate the value that it brings, and so, you know, for us, it's an aspiration to have more students, but unfortunately, we, you know, we provide the seats and they're not filled.
Tim?
Thank you. So I'm curious, we're the most distant public school district within the catchment basin. So we have fewer... is it fair to say we have fewer kids than, say, Hamden or other towns?
Only through conversation. I don't have the actual statistics on that. I don't know how many open choice students attend Amity Schools or Hamden Schools. Only through conversation, I believe Hamden has some. I don't know how many, but I could get that data for you.
Yeah, it's not... I guess just anecdotally, would it probably be like comparable to what we have? Like, you have no idea? Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Grippo?
Well, since you came back, you gave me a moment for my brain. The wheels will start spinning. Just to go back to the Title IX report, you said you were planning to give a report on the 21st, or at least at some point next week during our budget meetings, so we have time to consider...
Absolutely.
Implications there?
Yes, absolutely. Yep.
Thanks.
Tim?
Yeah, with regard to the Title IX, the way it seemed to be framed last week was about fairness, and that's important to me, in relation to girls' and boys' hockey. But one thing I'm curious about, and I imagine other people are curious about too, is is there anybody else who's been asking about it? So when you get to that, just to make sure we have an idea, if somebody's been asking for five years, that would, I think, correctly considered by the board as part of a bigger picture.
So your point is if there's a female team that wasn't represented last Thursday that had been asking since, you know, 1982 for their due, that that would obviously be a consideration for the board.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly.
Yeah, I can tell you that that's not necessarily the case. We've had other teams request, you know, to be included in our interscholastic program, most recently rugby and fencing. But the way that the rugby has developed over the years, it's not really as much an interscholastic program that our program locally is not looking to make that leap, from what I know. Fencing is also not really on the precipice of anything, so those two are not considerations leaving, you know, girls' hockey really at the front, if you will, of a proverbial line.
Thank you. Mr. Grippo?
If I could just add a point of information for those who haven't been watching the finance meetings that we've been having over the last week, that we also asked Mr. Maciana to give a total cost analysis of, you know, what it looks like to carry a sports team and to kind of find out what, you know, all the revenue sources and, you know, how that all works in our school system. So there will be a presentation on that, and I'm guessing the Title IX analysis will also piggyback on that, so just so you know. Thanks.
Any other questions? Anne?
Going back to the healthy school start times issue, I appreciate the concern about making sure the School Modernization Committee gets off and running. But I will report, because the healthy school start times is an important issue for me personally. I've been talking a lot about it, and I'm involved with now the Healthy Communities Coalition that has members of Chesapeake and other community members, including several physicians on that coalition. And I will be attending my second meeting with them, and with the goal of if there is developed any kind of presentations or workshops on especially schools and the health of children, issues like concussions and other things, I want to make sure that school start times is part of that conversation as well. And so that's what I'll be working on as I wait for it to get some traction with the Board of Education.
Thank you. Any other members of the board? Thank you Superintendent Solon. A couple of things. I think it's awesome that you're giving the girls' ice hockey, girls themselves, you know, FaceTime to talk about what you've learned. I think that's great. Like everyone said, it's been incredibly professional. I thought them and Mr. Martelli showed up, working, you know, with the intent of working with us and administration, not threatening a lawsuit or anything like that. I don't think that's really necessary. So I'm glad you gave them FaceTime, and I respect the fact that you wanted to do that first and then come to the board. So I think Tuesday night, you'll be talking more about the outcome of that research. We're all looking forward to hear that. And then based on information you give to the board, I'm sure we'll have some discussion soon on that. So thank you. Second, the school start times, I, you know, and I appreciate you reaching out to those groups. You know, from my point of view and others who talked to the board, there's so much going on. It's not that school start times is not an issue that we shouldn't be looking at, is where does it fit in the overall priority things. And speaking with Superintendent Solon and Assistant Superintendent and other folks, they just don't have the capacity to spend the time right now at this moment to do the necessary research, and I respect that, because if and when the board takes a position on school start times, I would hope it's when we have enough information collected through the work you're doing, Anne. But also, I think, much like some of the other bigger programs, and again, this is my opinion, School Modernization Committee and others, where I think it is going to be that kind of effort to do a community outreach and understand if school start times change, what is the impact, financial, planning, otherwise? And it's... it sounds like a simple concept, but I think we want to make sure we do it right. So, you know, when administration and district has something meaningful they want to share with the board, we'll be all ears. So thank you for helping assess some priorities. I know we have a lot going on, we being the school district, on the boards. I appreciate you mentioning that. That being said, I can move on to the next part of the agenda, which is standing committee reports, starting with curriculum. Faith, that would be you.
Okay. Two meetings to report on. We met Monday, December 9th, 2019, like committee heard about, unanimously approved an out-of-country field trip to request to Reykjavik, Iceland. It will be led by Sandra Vermeulen, who is Cheshire High School's environmental science teacher. It's going to be a fun trip, but it's going to be self-funded, and we will need to move, approve that... move on that after the report. Also, at that meeting, Ms. Solano presented just overview of the events held in schools across the district on Veterans Day. Over 200 veterans participated in the activities from discussions and parades and guest lectures, music, and hands-on activities. Ms. Payer from the High School Business Department presented an initiative to include Microsoft Office Suite, specifically skills in Excel and computers into the Computer Essentials course. Then Ms. Solano reported on how the PEC Jones grant funds were being used to support science instruction. And finally, Mr. Hanlon reported on the recent math nights for elementary families. Second meeting was held Monday, January 19th, at IT. Michael Early, who's the department chair for Cheshire Public Schools K-12 art program, gave an overview of the five-year curriculum review conducted by the Cheshire Public Schools' Curriculum Council. And the art teachers have adopted the new national visual arts standards, which promote student choice in art instruction and aim toward development of fine art skills. And so it is a movement away from teacher-based instruction to student-directed studying. The students' artwork will be on display at the April 24th art show at Norton. Then we heard from Ms. Solano regarding the assessment results for the Next Gen Science Standards, and they were administered to grades five, eight, and 11, and they're computer-based, as we all know, and testing real-world science or putting up real-world science scenarios and simulations that require the students to apply specific practices, and the kids did incredibly well. All Cheshire students performed well above state average. 84% of our fifth graders scored at Level 3, which proficiency or above. 74% of our eighth graders scored at Level 3 or above, and 66% of our eighth graders scored at Level 3 or above. Among the elementary schools, Norton Elementary... Norton not only scored the highest in the district with 94% of the students scoring above Level 3, but it has the highest percentage of students scoring at that level and above at the state, within the state. It's quite an accomplishment. And then within our DURG, our elementary schools ranked number one, our middle schoolers are ranked ninth, and our high schoolers are ranked 14th. And Mr. Hanlon reported the results of the Otis Lennon School Ability Test are all sets. We discussed three overnight field trips to Arlington, Virginia, Nashville, Tennessee, and Baltimore, Maryland. No action was needed on those. And under new business, the subcommittee heard a draft of a statement of responsibilities of the curriculum committee. The review was an informational presentation, and the statement will go to the Policy Committee for action. And that is the report.
Thank you, Faith. Are there any questions on the curriculum committee report? Seeing as there... Marlene, did you want to add any? I'm not putting you in a spot, but those test results. I know, listen, I know we don't measure everything by test results, but I think what was accomplished, especially those rankings, does speak some pretty big volume on the commitment that the staff has made to our students and their achievements to rank first through 14th. This is across the state, not just in our DURG. I think that in some...
Norton, yeah.
Norton in particular, yeah. So I don't... do you want to tell a little more about that, or... you don't have to. Brag, yeah. That's the word.
So we were very pleased. You mentioned Norton, and Norton did, as Faith mentioned, score first in the state for their rankings on the science test. And it's important to know that this was the very first time we've taken this test, so we really didn't know our students have taken this test. I feel like I'm taking it. Didn't know what to expect. So we're really very happy about that, and also very grateful for the PEC Jones money that we have been able to partner with the Connecticut Science Center to get some coaching for our Rams. This year, they're working with our middle school teachers, and coming up in March and April, they will be offering some coaching to our high school science teachers. So I know our science teachers are... have been asking and really wanting to engage in those shifts about the NGSS standards. So thank you.
Thank you, Marlene. Is there any other... Tim?
Yeah, just for clarification, our Rams, so we're the Cheshire Rams?
Acronyms. I don't know them all and I'm sure a lot of people in TV land don't either.
So they are really curriculum instruction and assessment specialists, if you want to know the truth. But back in the day, they were called the Rams and they are teacher leaders who are reading and math specialists. So that's where the Rams comes from.
Thank you.
Good question. Anyone else from the board? Andrew?
Faith, the cost of the Iceland field trip, that's paid entirely by the students?
Yes.
Is there any provisions for students who can't afford the $3,400?
We discussed it and actually got into a lengthy discussion. Didn't seem to come up with any answers about scholarships or fundraising. But it is not until April of 2021, I guess I should have mentioned that. So that, you know, is a year down the road plus. So I think they'll be doing fundraising and, yeah.
I'll just add that Dr. Gad and I have had some conversation about, you know, our school counselors know of the families who are in need and can certainly work with kids who, you know, are talking about wanting to go on these trips and bringing it to their attention, just like we get waivers for SAT and waivers for free and reduced lunch and those kinds of things. They're very keen to know about what's happening with that. And if there were students who were interested, we would help them to find a way by working with community groups, by working with youth services. We want to ensure that any kid who would like to go, that we help them to meet those needs.
Thank you. Thank you, Faith and Marlene. Any other questions? Seeing as there are none, I believe, Faith, you'll be calling for a motion?
Yes. I move that the Cheshire Board of Education approved the participation of Cheshire High School students in the educational field trip to Reykjavik, Iceland from April 10th, 2021 through April 17th, 2021, with the understanding that there is no cost to the Cheshire Board of Education.
Thank you, Faith. Is there a second? Anne Harrigan, seconds. So any discussion on the motion? Good. Seeing as there is none, the motion is that the Cheshire Board of Education approved the participation of Cheshire High School students in the educational field trip to Reykjavik, Iceland from April 10th, 2021 through April 17th, 2021, with the understanding that there is no cost to the Cheshire Board of Education. All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That concludes our curriculum committee report. Up next is our finance committee report. Mr. Grippo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to, I guess, an overview of our financial status. According to our summary here, eighty-two point four percent of our approved budget has been either expended or encumbered. As reflected in the above summary, through December 31st, 2019, we are projecting to end the fiscal year in balance. This summary report includes the majority of our full year encumbrances for our largest expenditure categories, which include our salary and student transportation accounts. We are pleased to report that there are no significant budget concerns to report through the first six months of the fiscal year, but we continue to monitor our accounts and anticipate expenditures closely as we continue through the second half. Assuming that expenditures remain on track to budget through the end of January, we anticipate that we'll ease our district-wide limitation for schools and departments and permit expenditures of up to 70% of their budget allocated for non-payroll accounts effective February 1st. I guess I can continue on. The, we've also had our initial finance slash budget meetings this week and last. It's been so many of them. The first one was, of course, the superintendent's presentation of his recommended budget. And on Tuesday, if I recall, Mr. Massiana gave an excellent report on, or a presentation on certified, non-certified salaries and also benefits for employees. And if Mr. Massiana would like to add anything, go right ahead.
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grippo. Do you have more?
I think medical benefits, that's usually handed over to Ms. Massiana.
So give some good news, Mr. Massiana.
Well, it's Friday tomorrow. That's the good news. But if you've looked at the medical benefits report, I don't have any really good news. The months of November and December, those reports, you know, did come in and the claims for November were 995,097. You know, the expected claims, you know, per month is about 750,000. So that exceeded the 750. It's not surprising as we come into December, because we're on HSA plans for the most part, the HSA plan year ends in December. So most employees have met their deductible by now. So those claims are going against our claim fund. Unfortunately, December marked a new record claim month with 1,146,439 in claims. It's not unusual for December to be our highest claim month, you know? And if you want some good news, in January and February, our claims typically go below the running average. So it should come down for those two months. But our medical benefits claim reserve, you know, did drop from about 4.5 months in October, you know, because of the two high claim months, November and December, were down to 3.58 months of claims reserve. Still healthy, lower than we've seen in recent times. It should rebound over the first quarter of the year. So, you know, one thing that I would like to add is part of what's driving the claims in November and December is we do have some large claims that are actually reaching the stop-loss level. So when those claims reach $175,000, we don't pay anything more from our claims balance. It's basically reimbursed to us from our stop-loss insurance. So through November, I don't have Decembers yet. I know that we have about $80,000 in stop-loss reimbursements coming. We average the last couple of years about $500,000 in stop-loss reimbursement. So that will help increase the balance in the reserve fund. So it's, you know, always a little bit dicey as we go through, you know, each year with our medical claims, you know, they're not very predictable. If you remember our budget presentation earlier this week, what's controllable is what we put in. What's not controllable are the claims. So if we go through a rough claim period, then, you know, we would expect to see those, the reserve balance come down. And I know there'll be more discussion around, you know, what we do because it is a large portion of our 2021 budget request to start funding our claims rate with contributions so they equate. And the good news is the report's over. So hopefully it wasn't too painful.
Thank you, Messiana. I'm surprised to have your voice after Tuesday night. Are there any questions from the board on the finance report? Yes, Mr. White?
Yeah, with the medical, with the medical benefits trust fund, who, are you putting, is money getting put in there monthly? Is that a board vote, a superintendent choice?
No. The way, the amount of money that goes in, I'm sorry, the way, the amount of money that goes in every month is based on the budget we have annually for the contributions to the reserve fund. And if you look at the top of the report, it's 681,500 per month. So that's what we contribute every month. The claims this year are averaging $883,000 a month. So 681 going in, on average, 883 going out, reserve balance goes down. So that's the way it works. You know, it's kind of an easy way to follow that. We know what's going in, whatever's coming out, the difference is generally what's going to affect the reserve fund. And then the offsets to that are, are we getting any stop-loss reimbursements that will increase the balance? Prescription rebates, which is another category up at the top in the contributions, those will increase the balance.
Anne?
It's important to note also that that was purposefully done in our last budget to start to draw down that reserve so that we could use that money in our operating budget. And that's why now it is coming down to a touchier balance and, which is the reason that I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, the superintendent is advising that we build those reserves back up or keep that at a more healthy level moving forward. And that's going to affect our budget for next year.
Yeah, just to clarify, the budget doesn't seek to build on the reserves because we had a very healthy balance coming into the year. And that's why, like you said, intentionally, we determined that we could claim less than, or we could budget less than the claims were on a monthly basis, knowing that we could rely on that reserve. This budget seeks to budget the forecasted claims per month so that the reserve doesn't decline nor grow over the course of the year. Now, obviously, all that's a forecast. It's, you know, you don't know exactly, which is why we have a reserve in the first place so that we don't get caught, you know, trying to pull a ton of money out of an operating budget to cover our insurance claims. Fairly said, Mr. Massiana.
Very well said by Mr. Solon and Ms. Harrigan. Thank you.
I just want to add that the money is not taken out of the trust fund to pay for non-claims. So essentially, what's happening is if, if we're supposed to be contributing 800,000 or 900,000 to the fund, we're contributing 600,000, that 200,000 that would have been contributed is potentially going to offset other parts of the budget and we're not drawing out. This is not a fund that we can touch for other purpose or stuff. Any other questions? Mr. Grippo?
Always keeping an eye on the tuition outplacement. I noticed we went over 100%. We're, you know, halfway through. Do we anticipate it to go any higher or is this going to be a trend through the end of the year?
I know it will be about $68,000 higher this month, meaning the month of January because there was a new settlement that was entered for a student. But, you know, and speaking to Tracy Hussey, who's our director of pupil personnel, that's all she's aware of at this point in time. And it's always a little bit of a, of a projection. You know, we have encumbered all the students we're aware of, but sometimes, you know, the monies that have been encumbered aren't spent, you know, because of, you know, the outplacement services aren't as high as expected or a student isn't able to attend. So, you know, I look at where we are on a year-to-date basis. It's running okay. I'm not particularly concerned right now. It could change, but I think we're running okay. So we just keep our fingers crossed, just like we do with medical benefits. Those two accounts are probably the least controllable accounts that we have.
I guess maybe, this is probably one you can't control either. I just noticed workers' compensation also went over 100%. Is that, do we have a reimbursement program perhaps from the state or do we carry any insurance policy to cover anything that goes over that or?
No, that's just our premium. The premium was higher than we budgeted. So that's fixed. That one's not going to change.
All right. Thanks. Any other questions? Seeing as there is none, we're going to move on to planning. Mr. Martelli?
Tough act to follow. Back on December 18th, we had our first, my first, chaired my first planning meeting at Homestead School. Main takeaway is I'm not going to get into every project. There's a lot of projects going on across the district and there's a lot proposed in the coming years. But communications plan, we could receive an update on that. I'd like to thank Ms. Kelly Lenz for all the work that she's done on our social media, Facebook, YouTube, Instagram, and even getting the superintendent his own Instagram page. Yeah, I'm his friend on there. So. New district website is promised to be unveiled in April of 2020. And this is all born out of the communications plan, which began back in the summer of 2018. The district went out and surveyed 800 or received surveys of 862 members of the Cheshire community, which 96% of those surveyed view the Cheshire Public Schools as essential to the community, which I thought was a pretty important fact to bring up. I think we could all agree with that one. Went out to the community centers, the library, and also the senior center in order to receive those surveys from folks. Communication plan will be delivered to us. Do we have a?
Well, there's not an actual plan per se. We did the plan already. Sorry, we did the, we already executed the plan, the development of the plan. The fulfillment of the plan should really culminate with the website.
So that's in May of 2020?
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on to the different, we touched on the school modernization committee there. I know there's going to be more of an update on that later on tonight. I had only been to my first meeting, which was in December, December 16th on that, where we, we received an update on the Perkins Elmer study and then other items for school modernization. We received a review of the 2019-20 approved capital budget items. There's $3.5 million worth of work that's being done, which will be done district-wide. Those have to be referred to the Public Building Commission or to the Board of Education to run those projects, which will take place in 2020. Those include replacement of boilers at both Doolittle and Highland Schools, HVAC replacements at Dodd, CHS, and Chapman, window replacements, lavatory replacements, cafeteria upgrades at Norton, and acoustical tile replacements district-wide. Mr. Massiana touched on several projects that have recently been completed. Those include school security improvements, Cheshire High School interior code compliance, oil tank replacements at both Darcy and Doolittle School, window replacements, and some other issues across the district. Also, Mr. White reported or asked the group to start looking into the installation of solar panels within the district. There was a discussion about roofs and as we get into school modernization and different projects that need to be done across the district, we aren't going to be doing any of that work yet, but it will be looked at as we move forward with school modernization because there are some great programs that Eversource Energy does have. That's pretty much my report.
Thank you, Ms. Martelli. Any questions for planning report? Or comments? You mentioned solar, so I know you're anxious.
Go for it, Tim.
Go for it.
Yeah, so just so everybody knows, I reached out to, yeah, this is about solar. So for people in town and anyone on the board who's unaware, as a member of the Energy Commission for the past few years, for a while on the town council, the school roofs had been reviewed. And generally speaking, of the 500,000 square feet that we have, they're not, they don't have the structural, structural integrity for holding solar. But you don't have to put it on a roof. There are some places that, in my opinion, there's land that probably is not about to be used anytime soon as well. You can do solar carports. I reached out to some of my friends across the state and asked them about their towns having done solar carports. And the feedback that I got, generally speaking, is that they are paying less for their electricity from those solar carports than we're paying for our current rate here in town for the schools. So I think it's, I think there's a good chance, there's no guarantee, but I think there's a good chance that we would actually be able to install, install solar carports similar to what we recently did, what the town recently did at the PD, at the police department, and save money by doing so. So I think that would be a good thing to consider. And also, with regard to the school modernization, I just, I hope that the school modernization committee, as they move forward, and I'm not sure when the right time is, but if there is new construction or renovation, whatever it is that's considered, I hope there is serious consideration of what is called net zero energy. The basic idea being that you put a little bit more money in upfront to save money over the life of the building. So as an example, you put in more insulation and you spend less on heating bills. It's a concept and generally speaking, it's been, you know, it's been proven out in projects. I don't know that it would necessarily work here, but I do hope that we seriously consider it. it because, from a financial aspect and also an environmental perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Faith, you have a question?
Mr. Masiana, maybe you know this. Does the, is the state starting to build those requirements, those energy, sustainable energy requirements into reimbursement rates or anything that you know of? I know that California is doing it, and whatever California does, we usually do pretty quickly afterward, but what do you?
Well, I don't know specifically as far as reimbursements. I know that as part of any school construction project that would have an element that has energy savings, you know, there are programs that we would be reimbursed for, and, you know, I'm not familiar enough with the new school construction requirements now, if there are even more stringent requirements. I don't think it's specific necessarily as to solar, but, you know, that is one of the items that, you know, the state is going to want to make sure that we're building buildings or renovating buildings so they are energy efficient. And we'll get more information as we go through school modernization, and, you know, there is a plan to hire a consultant to help, you know, the committee, so I'm sure that's going to be something that's looked at carefully. I will tell you that when we were looking at the middle school project, we had educational specs, you know, there was a part of the presentation from TSKP that was the architectural firm that was hired. They had a whole energy efficiency detail as part of that, you know, building construction. We know it never, you know, came to fruition, but that was certainly part of the calculation.
And I might add, as I recall, it's rather expensive upfront to include those energy savings. You do realize great savings in the long run, but you do have to put money upfront to get those.
It's all about lifecycle costs, right?
I think we're seeing that now with the buildings.
Yes, please continue.
Mr. Perugino, I'd just like to let the board members know that one of the projects that we are working on is the, at the high school is the ADA compliance project where we have a request into the state for a school construction grant. That project portion that we're looking at now is about eight hundred thousand dollars. What I found out just a couple of days ago is that the SCG 042 form, which has to be executed, requires a set of specific resolutions that I will be adding to next Thursday's agenda for approval. The board basically has to approve the resolution that's compliant with what the state needs in order for us to get a school construction grant approving the architect's specifications for the project. So I will put together a package, you know, Ms. Juzinski will send it out to the board members, and we have a meeting with the state on January 28th, but that is the last piece of documentation that we need.
Briefly, what is the project again?
This is the ADA compliance project where we're making the doors
Oh.
Fully compliant for ADA access at the high school. I believe there's eighty-two doors that, not just the doors have to be replaced, but we have to make modifications to the entryway, pulling the door out to meet the corridor so that someone, you know, that's in a wheelchair in particular can gain access to the room.
I remember this was discussed during planning. There's, you know, work with the cinder block, the brick, the space.
Correct.
It was not a cheap. Was this, one last question, was this a result of that civil rights compliance assessment back in 2000?
Yes, this is on the Civil Rights Compliance Review List from 2009.
It's on our 11th anniversary. But at some point, a future planning committee meeting, it'd be good for the board, new board members in particular, high level, like a little chart that we had this much stuff to squeeze in a twenty-pound bag. This much got done. There's a lot has gotten done, but I think folks forget
Right.
The magnitude of that assessment.
We are closer to the end than the beginning on that project, that overall project.
That's good to know. Yes, Mr. White. Tim.
Thank you. Yeah, just one other point I wanted to say. One of the things that I mentioned at the planning committee meeting is converting our school buses from diesel to electric. The solar carports, from my perspective, from my perspective, they generally make good economic sense at this point. Electric school buses don't, but the technology is coming, and I just wanted to thank you, Vin, for getting me information on the economics of electric school buses from our own provider, DATCO, which is partnering with Middletown for the first, what I understand is the first electric school bus in the state of Connecticut. I think Virginia and California have already done them in the hundreds. They're doing a good number, so it's starting to happen, and it really doesn't make much sense for us right now, but it is something that is going to happen. I do believe it'll happen sometime in the next five to 10 years. So thanks for getting that information.
You're welcome. I will add that Don DeVivo, who's the president of DATCO, is, you know, pretty forward-thinking about, you know, the possibilities of, you know, all types of fuels, so he would be a good resource, you know, to talk to when we're ready.
Honestly, I think the one that needs to get on board is Eversource. As soon as they realize they can make money off of it, I think this is going to move a lot faster. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. We're going to move on to policy. Mr. Grippo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I won't read the minutes in its entirety because I have some other reading to do, but I'll mention three notable events which occurred. Firstly, we had a guest, which doesn't happen often at the policy committee meeting, and that was Ms. Krista Hayes. She came, and just to note, this meeting occurred on December 11th, so this was quite a while ago, after, that she had, I think, visited perhaps even the evening before to the town council, and so we decided to invite her to our policy meeting because we had had her, we invited, she spoke, I think, several times at policy last year as well. So we decided to kind of up our efforts and sort of revisit to, you know, where she, where things were standing, and she kind of, she revisited essentially almost the same problems that she had had the year before. So we discussed, you know, generally how we could perhaps adjust policy to perhaps solve the problem, and since then, you know, the, most of the board, I think, has discussed some of this. We discussed with administration, even discussed with town council, perhaps find a solution, and hopefully we'll be able to find one soon to sort of, to solve this problem once and for all. Next, for the, for the new board members in attendance, we revisited the hazing and bullying policy. Generally, we discussed that a lot of the policy in effect, we're trying to figure out ways to be able to measure it more effectively, but to know that a lot of the things that we want are already there, it's just a matter of kind of figuring out how to get all the way there. And that there's a legislation that passed last year that goes into effect next year that will also cover some of the changes that we are asking for as well. So it's going to be, you know, an effort going forward, perhaps even next year to accommodate policy changes, and we're going to debate whether or not we are going to be proactive or to wait until the legislation's enforced to make the changes to find, you know, see the final formation since the legislature's meeting again in February. Finally, at the end of our two-hour and 10-minute policy meeting, we did move forward three policies, I'm sorry, four policies, and I will read them now for a first reading. The first policy is 5112, Students' Ages of Attendance. This one is multi-page, so I'm just going to sort of review the changes that we made. In summary for this policy, this changes to this policy are a result of changes to Public Act 19-179 concerning homeless students regarding proof of residency. If the student claims that he or she is homeless, then the party claiming ineligibility has the burden of proving by a preponderance of the evidence that the student denied schooling is not homeless in accordance with the federal law. The changes that we made were, I believe, statute in nature, or changes, there were changes in statute, so we made changes to the policy, notably changing the age of, let's see, high school graduate or the parent of person having control of a child stricken from 16, moved to 17 years of age. And then I'll read these new paragraphs that were added. I'll read the preceding paragraph. The, "The parent or person having control of a child five years of age shall have the option of not sending the child to school until the child is six years of age. The parent of or person having control of a child six years of age shall have the option of not sending the child to school until the child is seven years of age." And then the new additions, "The above requirements are not to serve as barriers to immediate enrollment of students designated as homeless or foster children as required by the Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA, and the McKinney-Vento Act as amended by the ESSA. The district shall work with the local child welfare agency, the school less attended, or other relevant agencies to obtain necessary enrollment documentation. The parent guardian of any child who is denied admission to school or in emancipated minor, a student eighteen years of age or older, a homeless child or youth, or an unaccompanied youth who is denied schooling, or an agent or officer charged with the enforcement of attendance laws may request in writing a hearing by the Board of Education. Such hearing may be conducted by the entire Board of Education, or by a subcommittee of three board members, or by a local impartial hearing board of one or more persons not members of the Board of Education." And then there's just some changes to statute listed. So that's for a first reading. Sounds like maybe we might tighten up a little bit of the language there in that paragraph, but we'll see. If it's, if that's law, we'll just leave it. Next, yeah, go ahead.
On that one in particular, so that language comes to us by way of who?
Uh.
Okay.
Based on state. Statute. Yeah. Thank you.
The next one is 9326. This is bylaws of the board. So these are, these next three are actually bylaws of the Board of Education that we have reviewed. Changes to 9326 is titled Minutes, and the change here was, appears to be significant. Let me just make sure here. But in general, the, the opening paragraph was changed to read, "The Board of Education recorder clerk shall keep the minutes, a record of all Board of Education proceedings as required by statutes, which shall be a complete and permanent record of Board of Education meeting action, including resolutions and motions in full." The remainder remained unchanged, so that was the only change for that policy, bylaw. Next is 9325, Meeting Conduct. In this bylaw, we changed several, I guess, well, words, it looks like, to bring us into compliance with several court rulings which dealt with First Amendment rights. Number five was changed to, "It is recommended that no oral presentation shall include charges or complaints against any employee of the Board of Education regardless of whether or not the employee is identified in the presentation by name or by another reference which tends to identify an individual. All charges or complaints against employees should be submitted to the Board of Education under provision of the Board of Education policy." The original paragraph read that, essentially, that this was not allowed. So that's sort of a big change.
If I can add on to that, so what spawned this, again, just as CAE is the, you know, Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, they publish guidance periodically, and it appears that some of the boards of Eds have been sued for First Amendment violations because they've had extreme cases where they would not allow the public to voice their opinion, and First Amendment rights boards can't unfortunately stop someone from pretty much saying anything unless it gets disruptive. So this is what you've done to bring us into accordance, you know, of course, we'll try to, you know, recommend folks to be cordial when they come up here, but by and large, boards can't force folks to restrict what they say. What comes down to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The final bylaw that we moved to a first reading is 9325.2, which is called Order of Business, and this affects the, I guess, the permanent order of the agenda that we have at all of our business meetings. In this case, several items were moved, and one item was added, I believe. So essentially, the audience participation, which I believe is on our current agenda, is number seven, will be moved to number two so that we don't have to adjust that every time. We have a, we wish to move the audience participation. Let's see, we have standing committees. I guess this is a shift of approval of minutes, and standing committees were all moved up, it appears. A consent calendar was officially added as number three on the agenda. Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you want to speak to that at all because I'm not entirely familiar with consent calendar or...
Actually, now that I... So there's a number of items, sometimes the board tends to take votes, like minutes was one of them. Although we do still have that broken out, we can use a consent calendar, essentially do a bulk approval of, I won't say the word mundane items, but it essentially helps speed up our meetings a little bit. Do you want to, and I know that's only one part of it, but do you want to?
Yeah, I mean, something like, I know, you know, like the field trip approval, things like that, that are, like you said,
Not mundane.
Not really items that receive much public, you know, attention. There are items that are kind of pro forma adoptions of the board that we will list out as part of the consent calendar, but we can adopt them all in one motion to help move things along.
Tim.
Yeah, when I was on the council, somebody donates $10, we would vote to accept it under the consent calendar, just one swift motion. And if anything is on there that somebody is concerned about or wants to speak to, anything like that, you just make a motion to remove it from the consent calendar and bam, it's done. But you're still, I mean, I'm imagining that some things like field trips, most people on the Board of Eds support it, and it's not a thing that really needs to be discussed a lot at a BOE meeting. So that's, yeah, things with the general consensus, one vote, be done with it. But we can still discuss anything.
Yeah, those are still discussion items if we choose to. Yes.
I have a question about the audience being moved to second, kind of two questions. What would happen when we have an agenda like we did tonight, which had presentations, those school presentations as the second item? Would the agenda go third, or the audience portion go third, or would it still be second? And why didn't we move the audience, why didn't we move that to the beginning tonight?
Well, two things. No one showed up tonight to speak to the board, which I guess was a good thing, but if there was outpouring of folks, like we do at a meeting, we tend to take a pulse before the meeting to see if there are folks here that want to speak to us. If we have a packed agenda, just out of curiosity, we'll try to move up to the beginning of the meeting. So tonight, there was no need to do that. As far as presentations, that's still going to happen after item number one. In fact, I don't think we always have presentations on our agenda, but I know we add them as part of section one.
Yeah, usually we have months.
Yeah, usually we have months.
Or actually, number two, but...
Yeah, we'll have that as number two. And I think, you know, the impetus for this change was to accommodate the community who may be coming, you know, say their piece or the same reason we have presentation second, collect their blanket and move on, you know, because everybody's so busy. So I think that's in that spirit.
That's the spirit, but also keep in mind that even though audience is speaking in the beginning, near the beginning of the meeting, when the board has motions to discuss, they, we will certainly ask for public input in those areas. One of the things that we discussed, but didn't have much traction was, again, we're trying to keep this simple, not to overkill, but have a public audience at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end of the meeting. We decided not to do that because it's kind of, we're not ready at this point, so the boards can revisit the future and change that. But this is really done more for convenience sake.
I just don't think we should do something that's going to bind us, having it always second. If there are other things that might come on the agenda that might go before, are we going to be restricted to always having it as item number two?
In the number two position.
Yeah.
Faith and ten.
I wholly support bringing this audience item up as close to the beginning of the meeting as possible. We are a public body and we're doing their...
I would agree with that also.
I know, I know, but I think asking them to wait until nine or 10 o'clock is not a healthy, it does not build a healthy relationship. So, you know, obviously, Mr. Solan and Mr. Perugini have considered this and feel that they are able to incorporate public presentations. But I do think if we, I just think it behooves us to listen to the public first.
Yeah, I don't think that's, thank you for the call today. I don't think that's really the concern, but before we get back, Tim, you were going to ask something.
Yeah, I mean, somebody can correct me, but I'm pretty sure that Robert's rules allows us to have a motion. We can move agenda items around as we wish for any particular meeting.
Yes, so that's a good, I'm glad you brought that up, Tim. One of the reasons, so there's consensus in the board to move audience up at the beginning of the agenda. That's something, you know, at least I know five of us, if not more, agree with. Rather than every meeting having a motion to amend the agenda, knowing we're going to do this anyway, it's just, with this current board, it makes sense to do. Also, because of FOIA law, Freedom of Information Request, while it's perfectly legitimate to amend the motion and put, amend the agenda and put something on there, if it gets approved, doesn't violate FOIA. You know, I think the intent of FOIA when it comes to agendas was to ensure the public's was informed, was coming forward to board. We've never had a situation where we try to sneak something on an agenda to get it under the radar. We just don't do that. But, you know, I don't want to raise suspicion. Every time we modify the agenda, the less is better. So again, we're going to try this out for a while. The board, we can choose the changes if it doesn't get us what we need to do, but it's worth a shot. But I want to go back to Ann's comment. I don't, honestly, I haven't looked at the existing agenda in our policy, but I'm not even sure if presentations is listed in the old agenda format. So I'm perfectly fine with if we do have presentations, that could move into the number two spot as exists today, and everything else moves down. I think we need a little bit of that flexibility in the agenda. And because it's been past practice to do presentations, it's been our per for the course, we're not changing anything in that regard. So there should be no concern that, you know, we can't do partnerships. But I'm glad you caught that, Ann. Thank you for that. Is there anything else on the agenda? I just really...
Well, I just wanted to go through the bottom of the agenda. That we are specifically noting the chairman's update and now, well, I'll get to that, I guess. Announcements of upcoming events and informational items. And upon reading through this draft, we did notice the, that we had put chairman instead of chairperson. And in the interest of posterity, that I'm assuming that chairman, former chairman, Helen will not be the last female chairman, that we should have a chair, have listed as chairperson on the official bylaw. So I don't know.
We're going to handle that in a little bit.
Okay, very good.
If I could just expand a bit. So just, is chair, I'm supposed to explain some of the, well, there's not a motion yet, but I'll explain the purpose of the section. So we under read opera, we've always had old business and new business. It's nothing new. But what we do is we have an agenda planning meeting. And what happens is our bylaws on the second page, which because the rest of this bylaw we didn't change, I don't think Adam's going to read the second page. But what the second page says is that items of business may be suggested by any board member and shall be included on the agenda. Items of business may also be suggested by any staff member or citizen of the district, but inclusion of such items on the written agenda shall be at the discretion of the superintendent and the board chairperson. And the reason why I read this is, is any board member, any member of the public can request items. They will go into the superintendent and/or myself. What will be instilled is a pre-agenda planning meeting where superintendent Solan, myself, Adam, and Catherine will get together and review the items. So there's a bipartisan discussion and get them officially on the agenda. FOIA is very clear about listing items on the agenda on their old and new business as opposed to, you know, just start talking about them at meetings. Doesn't preclude the board from amending or suggesting amendment during the meeting to that item, but again, we're just doing this to bring things in line with the updated templates we have from CAPE. I know it was a mouthful, but I apologize.
That officially concludes my readings of the bylaws and policies for our first reading.
But wait, there's more. So I'm going to, I want to do a point of order before we continue. So the point of order is, trust me, I don't want to operate this formal, but sometimes we do have to clarify things for the public and for the board. So Board of Ed bylaw ninety-three eleven talks about, on the bylaws of the board, which is a formulation, adoption, and amendment of policies. And I want to read section four. After policy committee refers the proposal to the full board, the proposed policy or amended policy shall be read at three board meetings. If the board concludes that for good cause, the policy should be adopted after the first reading, it may decide by five affirmative votes of the board to waive the second, third readings. An additional formal vote with at least four affirmative votes of the board is required to adopt the policy as proposed or as amended by it. Now, I'm reading this because we're about to go through this exercise. So having said that, with the point of order being over, Mr. Grippel, do we have a motion?
We do have a motion, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Cheshire Board of Education waive the second and third readings of the following bylaws, ninety-three twenty-five, ninety-three twenty-five dot two, and ninety-three twenty-six.
Thank you, Adam. Is there a second? Faith seconds. So before we get into discussion, let me read the motion so folks are clear. The motion is that the Cheshire Board of Education waive the second and third readings of the following bylaws, ninety-three twenty-five, ninety-three twenty-five point two, ninety-three twenty-five point six. I just want to clarify that section four applies once the first reading's been had. The first reading has just been had. That being said, is there a discussion on the...
Mr. Chairman, point of order, oh, you read ninety-three twenty-five point six. It's ninety-three twenty-six. Just clarification.
May clarify, the Cheshire Board of Education waived the second and third readings of the following bylaws, ninety-three twenty-five, ninety-three twenty-five point two, ninety-three twenty-six. So I'm getting tongue tied with my numbers. Yes, Ann.
So are we on discussion?
Of the waiving, yes.
So I would like to propose a motion at this point, a pretty simple one, that we change...
We're going to do that next.
After discussion.
So let me clarify. Between the buttons and my numbers tonight, I'm getting, I can't coordinate my tongue in it. So we first need to get through the waiving of the second and third readings. So if there are five votes to waive it, then we're going to get into the next motion, which should adopt and/or amend, if that helps.
Then I will make my motion to amend.
Of course. Is there any discussion on the waiving of the second and third readings of these three policies? Catherine, yes, please.
It's not exactly as to the policy, but I think I would have appreciated sort of a little bit of a heads up. You know, this is, we're handling something in a way that we have not done before, even though it's, you know, within the policy and all that kind of stuff. So I would have liked to understood that this motion was going to be made so, or things like that, because I need to be able to process it a little before we start going in a slightly different direction. I have no problem with doing this now, but I'd like advance notice of changes in the way we're proceeding.
Absolutely.
That makes sense.
Yes, it does. I think you were just looking for a heads up. We're not changing anything. We're just following our bylaws. I understand, I can't remember, I think very early on in my first four years, we might have had a bylaw that was critical that couldn't, not a bylaw, but a policy change that was critical, couldn't wait. The reasoning behind this is not to, you know, pull the wool or anyone's eyes, is that because our policies, which includes bylaws, requires three readings, by the time we get to the third reading, it's the end of March, our business meeting. So we can't take advantage of the new agenda until April. We can't enforce the public information. So the gist is, we didn't feel that that was, you know, really worth waiting that long to get done with. But that's, in hindsight, I don't even remember if we talked about it, policy, if we didn't, I apologize. That was, but point taken.
No, I'm not saying we're doing anything, you know, that we can't do or that we shouldn't do. I just, in my six years on the board, we haven't ever done it that, you know, I mean, we just haven't. So I'm not offended or anything. I just would like to know when things like that are going to come up.
Good point. And we'll do a better job of that. And again, I think we're exploring our bylaws that, you know, they've been there. Again, I really don't intend to do this any further unless there's something, you know, again, if there's ever an emerging situation where, in my opinion, a board has to pass a bylaw or policy, then we're not doing a good job, but this is not the case. Point taken. I made notes and I definitely appreciate your input. If there's no other discussion on the motion, which is to waive, is there any other discussion on this current motion? If you have one, it's okay.
No, 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 I'm sorry.
Because of the second part to this.
I was getting ready to vote. I'm sorry.
Seeing, so we're going to try to get out of this. So seeing that there is no more discussion on the motion, the motion is that the Cheshire Board of Education waive the second and third readings of the following bylaws, ninety-three twenty-five, ninety-two fifty-five point two, and ninety-three twenty-six. All those in favor? Is unanimous? Thank you. Mr. Grippel, is there a motion to approve the amended bylaws?
I just happen to have one.
Awesome.
I move that the Cheshire Board of Education approve and/or, I'm going to change on, and/or approve and/or amend. Thank you. I'll change...
We're going to get through this.
Yeah. Well, it's not... Start over. I move that the Cheshire Board of Education approve the amended bylaws ninety-three twenty-five, ninety-three twenty-five dot six. And ninety-three twenty, that's the, ah ha, yeah. I'm going to start over one more time.
Can I make a quick suggestion that you include the numbers, but also the very brief description of what that bylaw is?
Put them in order here so I can...
They're right here.
Fantastic, yes. Thank you, Ann. Okay. I move that the, I move that the Board of Education approve the amended bylaws ninety-three twenty-five, Public Attendance, ninety-three twenty-five dot two, Order of Business, and ninety-three twenty-six Minutes, and direct the superintendent to put said bylaws into immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Grippel. Is there a second? Wow. Catherine, second. You are the new Marlene, Marlena when it comes to seconding motions here. Thank you, Ms. Helen. Discussion.
Would this be an appropriate time to make a motion? I have a very simple change that I would like to make in the language of the agenda moving forward, and it would be to change the word chairman to a more general, neutral language such as chairperson, which I believe we do later on in, in the document, so. But it's not, it's not listed that way on the, on the agenda.
I don't have an issue with that. It is, references chairperson down later on. Your thoughts on that, Mr. Grippel?
I was going to second the amendment.
So... So Ann is, so the motion is, because this is an amendment, to the motion on the table, Ann is proposing that we amend the motion that the Board of Education approve the amended bylaws ninety-three twenty-five, ninety-three twenty-five point two, ninety-three twenty-five point six, ninety-three twenty-six, and direct the superintendent to put said bylaws to the immediate effect with the text change, the bylaw ninety-three, ninety-three twenty, ninety-three twenty-five point two, from chairperson to chair, I'm sorry, from chairman to chairperson. There's a one-word text change. Is there a second on the amendment? Mr. Grippel seconds it. Is there a discussion on the amendment? Perfect. And what I just did there, that's per Robert's rules of order. If there's a motion on the table, I'm doing a point, self-point of order. Certainly, a board member can move to amend the motion on the table. It was seconded. Is there any discussion about the amended motion? Thank you. Seeing as there's no other discussion, I'll read the motion one last time. Thank you. If someone gives me a FOIA problem over this, they got something seriously wrong because we've been dotting i's and crossing t's a number of times I've got to say this. That the Cheshire Board of Education approve the amended bylaws ninety-three twenty-five, ninety-three twenty-five point two. Ninety-three twenty-five, ninety-two fifty-five point two, and ninety-three twenty-six, and direct the superintendent to put the bylaws into immediate effect with the text change from chairman to chairperson. All those in favor? Awesome. It passes unanimously. We're done with that part. Thank you, board members, for that. Again, it's not my intention to operate that formally, but appreciate your patience and point taken, Catherine, on your feedback there. Next up is actually a fun one. This is School Modernization Committee update, and I will start with the members. You have a point of order, Tim?
Yes. So we just voted to change the word.
And pass the bylaws.
Okay.
With the change.
With the change. Thank you, sir. Next up is a School Modernization Committee update. I encourage my fellow board members that are on the committee, the shared experience, and if Jeff wants to give an update and Vincent, you want to do so, I don't know if board members want to start or where you want to start.
Andrew, you're up.
Not a hundred percent prepared, but I will start off and we can go from there. So we've had four meetings. I've attended the December sixteenth, the thirtieth, the sixth, and the fifteenth. Important to note, we have elected the chair of Anne Marie Kemp, the vice chair of Renee Martinez by a full vote of the committee. And last evening, we were joined by Jeff Pangaro, who is a financial manager here in town, and he is filling the vacancy on the committee. There's been a lot of talk about finance, about what the town can afford, about bonding capacity, about the schools, about the studies that have been done, the facilities in general, led by... led by both Jim Jascaut as well as our very own Vin Massiano. The committee, where we're at now, the committee has decided to put together a group to draft an RFP, Request for Proposal, which is gonna be issued. I'm on that committee, as well as the Chair Renee Martinez and Chuck Neff, who's a project manager, engineer by trade. And the idea is to go out for an owner's representative. We were, we received a presentation by Colliers International. They came and spoke about owner's reps and the process of trying to get everyone together on one page and be led by a professional group. The committee decided that that would be probably the best way to go versus hiring an architect or an engineer, as was done during the previous iteration of the facility assessment. Let's see. We have agreed to, or started to, move the meetings to the various schools in the district. Last evening, we had our meeting at Dodd Middle School. We received a pretty robust tour of the facility, various classroom spaces, community spaces, and get to see every school in the district. And so that was last evening, and then the next meeting will be held at Cheshire High School, and that is on the third of February at seven o'clock in the Cheshire High School library. All the meetings are open to the public, we intend everyone to come. There is public speaking that is held. They are, members of public are able to go on the tours of the school, which I think is very beneficial. All the meetings are at seven o'clock, and it's posted on the district's website as we move forward and schedule those meetings. There's three subcommittees that have been created, one of which is the RFP, which I mentioned. Our first meeting of the RFP drafting committee will be next Friday evening, the twenty-fourth, here at Town Hall at seven o'clock. I'm not sure of the room right now. Public is invited to all of those meetings, they will be recorded, and meeting minutes will be taken. There are out-of-district tours being planned, which I, maybe you could, you could elaborate on that. Or the, there's a subcommittee where individuals will be going out and touring the different, different schools in the surrounding towns to see how they have modernized their facilities. And then the third is a group of, a liaison committee of teachers and faculty from the district, where, whereas people will voice their concerns, the superintendent has encouraged different staff members across the district to come and talk about what their experiences are and what their hopes and dreams are, I guess, moving forward for the district. So that's, that's my update.
Andrew, and Ann, anything to...
I would just add, for the out-of-district school visits, that we did have our first meeting as the subcommittee, and just put together with Superintendent Solan's help, a list of questions that we would ask as we look at both projects that are renovations to buildings and projects that are new building types of things, questions, everything, just to gather information to be able to put forth to the full committee.
Thank you, Ann. Any other updates? Thank you. I really don't have anything to add. I just wanna note, just counting the meetings, since the committee was formed, it was a sixth full meeting, and so, six full SMC meetings, one committee meeting, and another, so it's already been, you know, they're, the committee's doing a lot of good work. I think the discussion's been very professional, very informative. I, I personally am really enjoying those meetings. So I appreciate our, our board members and Catherine for helping get it started, and I know there's a lot, a lot more to come, so that's, that's all we have on school modernization. What we have next? Calendar. Ms. Howland, do you have a calendar update?
Thank you for saving the most important report for last. All right. So on December nineteenth, there was a meeting of the calendar committee, which is made up of, you know, Board of Education rep, Superintendent Solan, Dr. Gad, Mary Cabrera from the Education Association, Vicky Chang from the Town YPTA, and our Assistant Superintendent, Kelly Lenz, and, and we all met, and the first order of business was to approve the school calendar for 2020, 2021, which had been approved in draft form last year at this time. There was one change that had to be made to the calendar, which I believe was that the calendar approved, the draft calendar that we approved last year did not have March thirty-first on the calendar. And so we had, that had to be added, and then that changed the last day of school. I believe that was the only change, so. So now the last day of school will be June ninth. First day of school is August twenty-seventh, 2020, and that's a Thursday, so kids will go to school Thursday, Friday, and then have the weekend. So we always like to try to ease the, the transition and back to school. So I have a motion that I would like to bring forward, and that is, I move that the Cheshire Board of Education adopts the 2020 slash 2021 school calendar as presented.
Ann, seconds. Again, the motion is that the Cheshire Board of Education adopts a 2020, 2021 school calendar as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor? Passing unanimously, thank you.
Great. The other item on our agenda was to review the proposed draft calendar for the, for 2021, 2022 school year, and we were provided with three options that had been developed by Superintendent Solan, and they just had different first and last days of school, and ultimately, 'cause we were a rowdy bunch that night, we came up with a fourth alternative and that we could all agree on. So the, the proposed draft that you have in front of you has the first day of school as August thirty-first, 2021. Convocation is on August twenty-sixth. I don't have to go through all those things, sorry. The last day of school, assuming no snow days, would be June ninth, 2022, and the last day for teachers would be June tenth. Snow days would be made up from, you know, between June tenth and June thirty, and then they'd have to move backward if necessary. Hopefully that won't, won't happen. So I have a motion for this as well, and that is, I move that the Cheshire Board of Education adopt the 2021, 2022 proposed draft school calendar recommended by the calendar committee.
Thank you, Catherine. Is there a second on the motion? Sorry, Faith hand, Faith beat you to hand. Faith seconds the motion. Is there a discussion? Seeing there is none, the motion is that the Cheshire Board of Education adopt a 2021, 2022 proposed draft school calendar recommended by the calendar committee. All those in favor? It is unanimous, thank you.
Thank you so much. If you weren't here, I feel like sometimes it's a C-span, tape recordings where someone in Congress sends out the, the pretend to talk to a full room, but there's no one there. We appreciate you. The chair does not have your business.
Just under other committees?
Yes.
Yeah, just the full board. I'm not gonna get into details, but the full board met Thursday, December nineteenth. Personnel committee to discuss goals and objectives with the superintendent.
Thank you, Tim. I was gonna bring up on their new business, but yes, that was an executive session, bit of a mid-year check-in and goal setting, so thank you for that. There are no other committees that I'm aware of that I've met, hopefully haven't met. On the new business, I just have a quick update. I add, on their chairs, chairpersons update. I just wanna give a brief update on what the board has been working on. As many folks know, we have some new board members, which at this point, being it's your past your thirty-day mark, you're no longer a new board member, you're a veteran. That being said, all the new members, as well as the veteran members, have been working very hard. We've had a number of committee meetings, as you heard tonight, literally in December. December is usually kind of a quiet month, but we took advantage of that to just get ahead of some things you saw earlier. So I do wanna thank all the board members for putting in the time last month and so far this month, as well as the staff, for answering unlimited number of questions and inquiries. You know, the, the whole board is really doing some good laboring on a number of items, so thank you for that. We've begun reaching out to our PTO, PTA groups. As folks know, we're all assigned to schools. In fact, a few of us were at the Town YPTA meeting earlier this evening. I had a chance to visit Homiston School, and as I am the liaison there, and I will tell you, I was very moved by the work that Tracy Husser and team are doing there. Now, I've been at Homiston before, I've heard Tracy talk at our meetings, but when I actually had a chance to speak to her staff and to the students, I'm, I'm really surprised, in a positive way, what they're doing. The fact that they're able to really have students become more confident, productive, working through a number of issues. I met a young lady who has gotten into UConn early, has a full ride, came from a very difficult background, and it's, until you see the work that they do, it's definitely shedding a new light on me. So I thank you, Tracy, and her team for taking that hour out in that morning with the students, which was very nice. One thing I noticed when I was there, I was shown one of the classrooms where, I'm sure Mr. Massiano knows this, they tried hanging up an LCD monitor. Now, they've got these nice sturdy concrete walls, but as they were trying to anchor the monitor, the concrete, concrete crumbled apart due to the age. So came up with a very clever solution to mount it aboard, but I raise that because I hope as SMC does its work, it does visit Homiston, and kinda really see how those things directly impact student learning. So again, I encourage our board members to continue contacting your PTA, PTO reps. As Tim mentioned, the Personnel Committee of the whole has met an executive session last month. We plan on reconstituting a legislative committee. There is such a thing for the Board of Ed. We've never really utilized it, but there's been a consensus of the board to perhaps meet and start setting some of our priorities for the upcoming legislative agenda in Hartford, but also kind of be a voice and a conduit to representatives, to kinda let them know, you know, the things that we're experiencing, how their action or inaction may be impacting our students. A lot of us just wanna, not necessarily be a thorn in their side, but it might be an opportunity to get a direct voice into our legislators and help move the needle a little bit in Hartford. Our first legislative committee meeting is gonna be next week.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. We'll send out the details for that. Public Information Committee is also being reconstituted. We did meet once, I think, last year around a communication plan, but there's been more interest now to kinda set a, a mission for the committee and perhaps use it to communicate that plan, what's been happening, maybe in time to the SMC, but board members will have input and ideas into that soon. I just wanna add, the Cheshire Chamber of Commerce Dinner is on February sixth. I believe they're giving out Educator of the Year award?
Yeah.
I will be attending, I just ran into board members. I spoke with Yetta, the Cheshire Chamber of Commerce. She would love to have us all there. If, if we do plan on attending, please let Carol know, because I think if we have a quorum, we need to, to notice that we'll be there, just to play it safe, even though it's a social gathering. Nonetheless, looking forward to attend that. As Ann and Grippel talked about earlier, there's been a facility fees rental discussion, I won't get into that too much more detail, I'd like the public know that we'll be talking more about that Tuesday night, as was discussed. Other than that, all I can say is, just based on the amount of meetings, discussions, and so forth, I guess to quote Star Trek, as far as the board is concerned, it's thrusters on full. There's no shortage of opportunities to move forward. So that being said, I just wanna give everybody a quick update, that your board has been very busy, and hopefully a lot of good things will come out of this. I have, there's no other new business mentioned. Before we adjourn, we are gonna go into executive session. It would be a poss, it's an executive session to discuss the superintendent's evaluation with no action to follow. So Kelly, you don't have to hang around to wait for us to come out of it. So I am calling for a motion to adjourn into executive session, or does someone have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Tim make a motion? Is Carolyn, is who's invited in, just Jeff?
Just the Superintendent Solan and the board.
Correct.
It is, I'm sorry, it's in our motions paper. If you wanna read it into the record.
Yeah. Move that the Cheshire Board of Education adjourns into executive session to include the superintendent of schools to discuss the superintendent's evaluation with no action to follow.
Is there a second? Mr. Grippel, seconds. The motion, I'm not gonna read the motion again, is, all those in favor? All right, it passes, thank you. We are adjourned to executive session.